The February 11th, 2016 Lawd City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, the prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Jim Johnson of Fellowship Bible Church. I think I missed that last time, sir, and I apologize for that. Fellowship Bible Church, please rise.
Join me in prayer if you would. Father God, I want to begin by thanking you for the privilege of having lived the majority of my life in Longview, Texas, and for the blessing of having raised my kids here and having my grandkids raised here. And I thank you, oh God, for the excellent leadership you've given us here, both in the past and the present. And Lord, I know, I know that the cost of leadership is far greater than the reward, so I pray, God, that you bless these men and women for their sacrificial work. Give them stability in their personal finances, peace in their relationships, and vigor in their health, so that they'll be undistracted in their attention to the business of this city. Now, Father, we invite you to this meeting. By virtue of your presence here, may we all conduct ourselves with civility and respect. And for our council and other leaders, give them clarity, God, in their thinking, so that their decisions would be wise ones. Help them discern any self-serving agenda and agree upon that which serves the interests of all. Stoke their sense of compassion, so that the weak and needy are protected. Sharpen their sense of justice, so the perpetrator is penalized and the victim is defended. Guard them, God, from the seduction of power. Give them favor in the eyes of federal and state agencies with whom they deal. Give them the insight to see what this city is and the vision to see what it can be. Give them enough success to keep them encouraged and enough difficulty to make them aware of their need of you and of each other. And Father, I also add, I just pray for special wisdom concerning this growing scourge of drug trafficking and gang violence in our city, oh God. It is an incredibly tough problem, so God, give our leaders commensurate courage and wisdom as they seek to tackle it. Do this for us, Father, and this will have been another great day for Longview, Texas. In this, we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. Tonight, employee recognition. The Development Services Customer Service Team provides frontline customer service to our area contractors, developers, builders, and citizens. Over the past year, the team has received many compliments by customers for their friendly attitudes, willingness to help, and responsiveness to customer needs. If you walk into Development Services, you can expect to be greeted with smiles and can-do attitudes. The team also strives to assist with quick turnaround times on permits, though they represent four divisions of Development Services, building, engineering, planning and zoning, and code compliance, they work together to assist customers and resolve issues. I would like to recognize these wonderful individuals, and as I call your name, please come forward. Devin Lawstedt, Deanna Wade, Colton Pittner, Vance Wiley, Natasha Jaime, Shannon Davis, Corey Flowers, Andrew Fields, and Sharon McCord. Okay. You all have heard me for months now saying what a difference we have in our Customer Service Department and Development Services. And these are the people that are making those things happen. These are the ones behind the scenes that are doing what we ask to do. I know Michael Shirley, the department heads, and Angela, and Ingrid, and everybody else down there, sorry, y'all are all there, but these are the ones that are doing these jobs for us. And I can tell you, you all, as all of us can see, are making a huge difference in the attitude and the development in Longview, Texas. And we appreciate it from the city, because this helps our budget. We appreciate it as citizens, because it gives us more choices of things to do in Longview, and you are doing a bang-up job. Thank you, and keep up the good, hard work. And remember, what that attitude is, can-do attitude. These people want to help our developers, and it shows every time you walk in there. So I encourage you to come in, test them out, see what you think. You'll see what a great Development Services group we have, and you'll want to do something here, too. So thank you all, I appreciate you very, very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you all very much. One more round of applause. This is the can-do group right here. Okay. Citizen comment.
I had more speaker cards. Did something happen to them?
Okay, very good. My first one. Hank Gukler, Hank, do you want to speak now, or do you want to speak when the items come up?
The items come up.
Very good. Okay, we'll keep you in mind. Jeremiah Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor Council, Mr. Willard. We had a thousand people two weeks ago, so I had to leave before I was called, but glad to have the opportunity now. I did have some specific items to speak about two weeks ago, but since all of those items passed, I just wanted to make my voice heard now that I could. Just wanted to speak in general about personal responsibility of our citizens of Longview versus the council's desire to create a business environment conducive to business growth, which increases tax revenue. I see the recent decisions about the regulating of animal care facilities and the efforts that are currently in place to regulate payday loan facilities tighter than they already are. I just see them as unnecessary infringements on a business environment that is already depressed in this city. With the downturn in oil and gas, the economy in general, this city really needs to be overwelcoming of businesses. Now, I'm not for a second saying that I support payday loans. As a matter of fact, I'm an ardent voice against them. I even teach a financial management class in my church to teach people how to better handle their money, so that they don't get in such dire straits that they feel that they need to go to these places. What I'm talking about is the efforts of the council to regulate, and in some cases, over-regulate, local businesses, to where they then decide that they have to go out of town. Guess what? We lose jobs, we lose tax revenue, all of that. The animal shelter or the animal care regulations, I was glad to see that it was watered down from the initial outlandish proposal that would have genuinely put people out of business. What I'm just saying is, what I try to encourage people is to have greater personal responsibility in their daily lives, okay? Learning financial management, being a smart consumer of the businesses and services that they use, okay? Kind of disappointed when I see a bunch of people come running to government to remedy what ails them, instead of taking responsibility for their own actions and saying, okay, I'm going to be a smarter consumer, and I'm going to learn how to manage my money. Those are just two of those. Now, in regards to Mayor, your proposal about gang recovery operations, that falls right into this, okay? It is not up to government to rehabilitate gang members, that is up to society and individuals. And I say that because in the very same newspaper article that you proposed that, there was the story about a guy right here in Longview who grew up in a gang, but by his own efforts left that gang, put that life behind him. That's called personal responsibility, and I commend that gentleman for him. It is not the role of government at any level to do that. So I want to tell you, I do oppose any of those measures, not only because it would be more money that the city's trying to spend on some other program with dubious, probably not even the results that it's gaining. I am a small government guy. Mayor, you say that you are. I encourage you to please back that up with actions, because it's not really showing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more speaker cards? I don't have any. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to, and we'll fill out a card after you'd like to speak. Come to speak, sir? Please, come to the podium.
Hadn't been this way in a while. I wanted to come out today.
Sir, sorry. Would you state your name, please?
Yes, sir. My name's Willie Willis.
Thank you.
And I'm from Longview. And I wanted to come out today. I hadn't been able to get out like I want to because of working, but every day I'd wake up and I would ask the question, why? I love Longview. My mom sat up there on that council. And I want to say this today to the police officers, to the council, to everybody in this room. Have you ever just said, I'm tired, I've had enough of it? I'm tired of everybody pointing the finger, saying this and saying that. Let's just stand up and be a community and pull together. This violent stuff, it's not going to go away, because we live in a generation where you cut on the TV, and that's all the kids see. The town has really nothing for the kids to do. Half of them, when they finish high school, they leave Longview. The job market's down. Longview depends on all. I mean, we blame each other, we blame the kids, which they are wrong. It's a few punks that's making it bad on the kids that's really trying to get out here and do something. My kids sit at home scared to go anywhere because of the things that have been going on. I ride my community, and I hear people say, I'm not coming back to Longview. I'm tired of it. Everywhere you go, it's bad. But you know what the world really got to do? We got to stop pointing the finger. We got to go back to them old grandmamas that would stand up to a bull. We got to take our community back. We got to stop pointing the finger. I can hear my mama saying in the back, we got to, we got to get our churches back involved. It's all about money now. We got to get the churches back involved. We all got to dig in and clean this up. Police can't do it by themselves. They cannot do it by themselves. It's going to take them old, nosy grandmothers. It's going to take parents. And the problem is, where it all rooted it from, we got single mothers that cannot stay home with their kids. They got to get out and bust two jobs like I got to do. And them kids is at home being interpreted by different things around them. This is why you have the trouble, because single parents can't do it. And I say it out of my mouth, if you are a dad, step up to the plate. There you go. Step up to the plate. Get in the church, get involved. I raised four kids. I didn't have a lot of money. My mom helped me, but I stood up like a man and I took care of what was mine. Half of these kids just want somebody to talk to. When I worked out at Longview High School, a lot of those kids just wanted somebody to listen to them. That's why they reach out and do the things that they do. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time, Mr. Mack, but I just got tired of hearing about the place that I grew up. I remember we could leave our screen door open. What has happened? Everything that makes sense looks bad, but everything that goes crazy looks good. We got to get back to God. We got to get back to the basics. It doesn't take a rocket science to figure out what's going on. I'm sorry today for, I just had to let this out today. The payday lending loan, I wanted to speak on that. It's a good thing, it's a bad thing, but it's common sense back to the ground. Title loans help people that can't, that credits went bad, bad marriage, job played out. They have to have something that they can go and conceal to, to get help, and they help them. But now it goes back to common sense. Don't go in and get seven, eight loans, and you know you can't pay for it.
Sir, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Yes, sir.
We'll be discussing payday loans in a couple of weeks. Please come back, okay? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak, please? Very good. Thank you so much. Okay, it's time for our public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to start out my update by sending out a thank you to Perry Reed of Reed &amp; Company. Perry had had a conversation with a few of our officers, and he identified a piece of equipment that would greatly help our officers at the firing range, and he so graciously donated $1,200 to buy that piece of safety equipment. And last week, we had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Reed and provide him a certificate of appreciation, and wanted to mention that tonight and thank him publicly for his donation and the support of the police department. Last week, we were able to make two more promotions within the police department. We promoted Paul Hickey to the rank of lieutenant. Paul is going to be our midnight watch commander. He'll be over the midnight shift from 10 o'clock at night till 6 o'clock in the morning. And we also promoted Mark Faulkner to the rank of sergeant, and he's going to be in a five-week training program for a new supervisor, working with another supervisor out there in the field, before we give him a permanent assignment. So these two promotions here, especially the rank of lieutenant, round out our rounds of promotions from Chief Dinger's retirement and my appointment, and our command staff is set from the rank of lieutenant and above. So very proud of these two guys, and I think they'll do a fine job in their current assignments. I wanted to add one new slide to my public safety update, just to kind of give you a snapshot of some broad numbers and what we, what kind of we responded to as far as calls for service for the prior month. So for the month of January, you can see that our officers answered nearly 10,000 calls. 5,640 of those calls were calls that were, we refer to as dispatch calls, which means that somebody actually called the police department and requested for an officer to come out. The other remaining 434,354 calls are what we refer to as officer-initiated calls, and that means that the officer initiated that type of activity, whether it be a traffic stop, or checking individuals, or checking on businesses, or doing security checks. That falls into that area there. Also during the month of January, we arrested 172 individuals. 14 individuals were arrested on felony charges. Although we arrested 14 people, there were actually 19 felony charges that were applied to those 14 arrests. And out of 158 misdemeanor arrests, we had a total of 260 charges. So that'll give you an idea of, kind of a snapshot of our activity for the month, and I'll include that in each month, to kind of keep you updated on that. It's been a little bit since I talked about our staffing. I'd like to just kind of give you a quick update on that. Of course, as you know, we have 172 sworn positions. We currently, right now, have seven vacancies, which means we have 165 actual positions filled. We currently have 11 officers that are in field trainings, that are riding with our field training officers right now. Eight of those are going to be released in March, so they'll be able to go out and work on their own, and we're looking forward to putting those eight officers into permanent positions within the, in the department. We have seven in the academy over at Kilgore. They will graduate next Friday. When they come back to the agency, then those seven will then roll into the field training program as well. We currently have five applicants in the hiring process that are just about finalized, and if everything goes well with them, they will go into the March Academy, which is going to leave us with just two vacancies in March. And we do have a couple of certified officers from some other agencies that have applied, and hopefully, we can fill those two vacancies with some of those applicants. So we're making good progress on our staffing. And then to close out tonight, I'd just like to announce tonight of our free women's safety course that we do each year. This course will be held April 18th to 20, through the 23rd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Mod Cobb. This is a course that's designed specifically for women. We'll talk about women's safety, we'll talk about workplace violence, handgun safety. We'll familiarize the women with handguns and how they operate, and hopefully, make them more comfortable with handling weapons, and then we'll take them out to the firing range, let them fire the weapons to, again, become comfortable around them. This is not a concealed carry permit class, but more of a familiarization class for the women. We'll also put them through our firearm simulator and then a day at the range. So anybody that's interested in that, the registration deadline is April 18th. We have a seating capacity of 60 applicants, so this is a very popular course, and I would encourage those that are interested to register early. And they can receive the application at longviewpolice.com, we have it up on our website. Any questions?
One question, chief. And you may not know this, I'm just curious. How long has it been since you had 170 officers on your staff?
It's been probably about four years.
Thank you, sir. You've done a great job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Fire Marshal Johnny Zachary, welcome.
Mayor Mack, council, Mr. Willard, thank you for letting me brief you in Chief Stillman's absence today.
You've got big shoes to fill, you know that.
I know.
He's very entertaining.
I know. I'm going to buff up. Anyway, tonight, one of the things I want to mention, this week, you notice, Monday was very high winds. We're in dry conditions, we don't think about that when it's not hot, but we've had alerts, we're not under a burn ban, but with high winds, fire can spread rapidly, as the foliage is brown and, you know, dead and not growing. On the left is an example of a burned barrel. Those actually are unsafe and do not meet code. On the right is an example of an outdoor fireplace that does meet fire code for ambiance or just sitting around and visiting. The left one could be cut down to 24 inches in height and become compliant. The problem with it, at the height of a true barrel, you have a lot of fuel in it, it could tip over. It's just hazardous, and it is too much fuel for the intention of an ambiance or an outdoor fireplace. So that's some of the criteria. We just want people to have a safe environment if they're going to be outside around an outdoor fireplace. Unfortunately, we have had several arson cases since January the 10th. They are there, except for the two car fires, we didn't put the cars on the thing. We are actually working all the cases. We're having to move them forward as we can make progress on each case, but those are the addresses that we're all aware of. And as Mr. Willis said, we need cooperation from the community. They are out there, this is their neighborhood, this is where they live, they're the customer, we've got to help them, but we need their help as well. And we have had several citizens come into our office. They are, the communication's beginning, and it needs to keep on, because that's how we work together to stop some of these very devastating and troublesome fires that we've seen recently. We have a map here. If you look up to the upper, that is the nursing home fire. We do have the person responsible for that in custody. On the left, the black dot is an attempted arson. It's still a felony, and so we're still working on that case. The two yellows represent the two car fires, and the other red dots are the cases we're continuing to work on that we're seeing in the pictures. To date, well, as of this afternoon, we've conducted 60 interviews and 400, actually 13 staff hours just on that part of it. And as I mentioned, we do have one suspect in custody, working closely with the DA's office to keep that case ready. We will continue to keep all of these moving forward as we get information and we're able to develop them. We encourage, if you have any information, call our office, 237-1119, or if you want to stay anonymous, please call the Gregg County Crime Stoppers, and that's a good way, if you're concerned about talking, you can talk without, you know, somebody knowing it. So we encourage the citizens to continue to communicate to us. Any questions?
A comment. Fire Marshal Zachary, first of all, I know you guys are working hard, and we appreciate you. Thank you for keeping us updated. I know you all are doing everything that you can. As you say, it's always helpful when the citizens cooperate, but you all are really doing a great job, and we thank you, and we want you guys to just be out there and be safe.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Easy, Jim. Easy. You took that. Easy. Chief Bishop, come up here, please, sir. Okay, this is totally unusual and totally surprised me, and Chief Bishop has no idea what he's coming up here for.
I thought I was eating.
No, you're not. You did good. But when you talked about the donation that you received from Perry Reed, we sure do appreciate that. Two weeks ago, at my office, I was sitting in the office working, and my front desk girls came back and said, I think there's a lady that needs to speak to you, which isn't unusual. I said, okay. But I always say, can you find out what it's about, so I don't know if I need to wear my bulletproof vest or not? And they said, she wants to talk to you about the police. And I go, okay, I need more information than that, because I can refer to Chief Bishop. She says, no, she wants to talk to you about the K-9 patrol. I said, you know, I don't know much about that, but I'll do my best, I'll give it my best shot. So I walked up there, this is the sweetest, nicest elderly lady that I've ever seen. She barely reached the top of my counter. She said, Dr. Mack, you've been my doctor for years, and I just want to do something, I want you to do something for me. And I said, what's that? She goes, I want you to give this to Chief Bishop at your next meeting for the K-9 patrol. And it's $2,000 in cash. I've been holding that for two weeks. I've been very nervous about this. But she said, I want you to present it to him, it's an anonymous donation, I have her name, because I know you're going to want to send her a note. But she just wants you to know that there are people out there that truly believe in what you guys are doing, and wants you to know that they're supporting in every way that they can. So thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And thank you to those who are donating and giving back to our community. It's cash, chief, it can't be traced. Be careful with that stuff. Yeah. But she was very insistent that went only for the K-9 patrol donation, so you'll make sure of it. Thank you all very much, and thank you for all the citizens that are doing things in our community. You know, we are becoming a much more vibrant, let me just, there's a term I'm thinking of, okay, go-giver community, okay? We are, and I appreciate that. Okay, consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda council would like pulled off for separate discussion?
We've approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Okay, action item. Considered ordinance submitting the city of Longview's budget allocating funds, amount of $1,085,000. Mr. Willard.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two items here that I would like for you to consider tonight regarding the current approved budget, and with a view, really, for next year's budget as well. And I know it seems like it's real quick to get from budget to budget, but in May, we'll start writing our new budget for next year, and it's no secret that next year's going to be a very challenging... it's no secret that next year's going to be a very challenging and difficult budget. So, part of this request is what we think is good prudent financial management, as well as, I think, will help us out as we start to write next year's budget. We have two equipment leases that have been in our budget. You might remember those from this past year. One of them is the new fire engine we purchased, and we did that this year by a lease purchase. The annual payment for the fire engine on the lease is $225,000 plus a year for that, and the payoff on that piece of equipment would be $1,850,000. And if we could pay that off, it would save us $41,000 in interest savings. The second equipment lease is 911 dispatch consoles that we had to upgrade two or three years ago and purchased those. The annual lease payment for that equipment is a little over $100,000. Early payoff would be $395,000 and a savings of $19,000. So, the early payoff for both of those equipment would be $1,480,000. We would be able to save $60,000 over the remainder of that lease in interest. And then, also importantly, we would be able to save or not have to come up in next year's budget with the $326,000 in our operating budget that we, by virtue of paying this off early, we could essentially save that money and not have to go into next year's budget.
Okay.
I had one more slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Real quick. This is pretty busy, but this really illustrates why we came forward with this proposal. You'll remember these slides when we did our budget presentation in July. The first column was the budget estimate that we presented when we were doing our budget, and the top beginning fund balance was an estimate because that was done in July and August, and of course, we didn't finish our year until September. As it turned out, after we got our year-end numbers, due to good savings at the end of the year that our city staff and workers helped us out with, and a few higher-than-expected revenues, we were able actually to begin the new year with $13,770,000 in our beginning fund balance. So, we had projected at the bottom a 12.62 ending balance at the end of this next September, when actually, this budget will yield more money, 15.72%, which is really good news. So, we wanted to, the amended side over here, you'll see the only difference is the lease payoff appropriation of $1,480,000. And if we do that, we will still have a fund balance in excess of what we had projected originally, which would be 13.49%. So, we think it would be prudent in several areas. Number one, I think it's always good to pay off debt when we can, and we'll have some interest savings, and then it will really help us when we start putting together next year's budget to do that. So, I'd ask you to amend the budget and appropriate the $1,480,000 to pay off those two leases.
We'll discuss this, Council. One observation I have, Mr. Willard, is the fact that we can still pay this off and still end up higher than we were when we started, when we thought we were going to start, which, that's good. My only concern with this, I'm a big debt payoff guy as well, and we can save X number of dollars, whatever that dollar amount is, is dollars we save. The 1.4 that we're going to spend would be in the fund balance for next year, but I think we've already made it pretty clear that we have no intention of dipping into the fund balance again next year. So, I mean, I want us to proceed forward with that in mind, that I'm fine doing this because it saves the city money. And I'm almost glad to, because I don't want to have that temptation out there next year, because we're going to have a budget where we don't dip into that fund balance. That's where we have to be next year. So, if you're comfortable with that, then I'm comfortable with that.
No, I think that's our expectation, that y'all made it clear last budget year that this was a kind of a one-time deal to be able to use the 1.8 million of fund balance. So, we, I think everybody understands that.
Other discussion? Mr. Moore, I know you have something.
Yeah. I might also add that when we do have to sell the last $8 million in street bonds to finish our 2011 street projects, we're going to have to go back to the rating agencies. And the effort that we're going to vote on here, I think, is a real plus, a good story to tell them that even in these hard times, we're looking ahead and we're paying down debt. Our fund balances are still strong. So, I am 100% in favor of this action.
Perfect. Anyone else?
Mayor, Council, I might add one other thing regarding this current year's budget, and of course, the, I think it was, what, 1.8 million or something of fund balance that we used to close that gap this year. And I know, of course, our sales tax, this is about the 12th or 13th month in a row.
Don't remind anybody.
That we're down.
They're sitting over there, remember?
Right. I understand. But we are making budgetary adjustments in this year's budget as we go along every month, and even, and we are monitoring our budget teams meeting regularly and monitoring these reductions in revenue. So, we will, by the end of the year, cut enough out of our current budget to not overspend what you authorize us to spend by the end of the year and make those arrangements. So, I just wanted to get that out there, that we are taking into account and working on that.
Mr. Allen?
One comment. When we originally looked at purchasing this equipment, the new engine and this equipment, I had asked Mr. Willard, "Is there any possibility we can go ahead and pay for this instead of leasing it?" And he said, "Well, at the time, we'd have to," you know, "That'd look like the best way to do it." But it's just, anytime you can pay as you go, it certainly reduces the responsibilities. And what we have to keep in mind is, it's not only the responsibilities that we're reducing today, but the other responsibilities that we put on the councils going down the road. So, we're relieving them of that responsibility at this time, of our prudent actions at this time.
Great point, Mr. Allen. Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Considered ordinance submitting the city budget, again, for $150,000. Ms. Hill?
But I'm not asking for money. The city is scheduled to complete the animal shelter this fiscal year, and in order to receive, account for, and expend donations contributed by donors, it is necessary to establish an animal services special revenue fund. This fund will only be utilized for restricted donations that the donors tell us they want the monies to be spent for, and only for the activities of the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very, very happy that you do this. I think what the people, if we'll make this very clear to the people outside in the community, this gives you an opportunity to donate to the animal shelter on a tax-deductible donation, and it will be used at the animal shelter. So, if, whatever your amount, small amount, whatever, I'm sure we can even take up to a couple hundred dollars. If you have a donation you would like to make specifically for the animal shelter, we now have an avenue where we can take care of this and certainly appreciate your donations.
And let me please add, we will also have, thanks to Councilwoman Ishihara, a 501(c)(3) that will accept donations. So, we're trying to give everyone the opportunity to donate in the manner they wish to support this venture.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're now considering ordinance commending Chapter 46, Food and Food Establishments. Before you speak, Ms. Hill, I want to call Hank up for his comments.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Council members, staff, and citizens of Longview, my name is Hank. Here, let me spell it for you.
Say it for me, please.
Gutchilar.
I never get it right.
Call me Hank.
I do, definitely.
And I have the honor and the pleasure to serve on the Mobile Food Vending Task Force. My fellow task force members and I, as such, were charged with this project and given the opportunity to play an important role in a process that is taking place because you, our elected officials, responded to the demands made by our constituents. You listened, you took notice, and initiated the steps necessary to make this a reality. In August of last year, the Longview News Journal conducted a poll, and the question was, "If the City of Longview allowed food trucks, we could take advantage of them." The opinion turned out to be an overwhelming 97% in favor and support. Your vote tonight will not merely put in place what your constituents have asked you for, it will also enhance our community and the quality of life in our city. Other communities who preceded Longview by allowing this have, across the board, enjoyed increased economic growth and positive use of their outdoor areas. Cities that allow these operations in their parks experienced an undeniable increase in usage of these public spaces by the people whose tax dollars build and maintain these areas. Food trucks rarely compete with storefront merchants because they're mostly set up in front of businesses selling different wares, and as a result, they complement each other. Food trucks also do not lead to a tragedy of the commons because food vendors have an incentive to keep their areas clean. National statistics also suggest that because of the increase in outdoor activity and small businesses, a deterrent of crime occurs. With more eyes of law-abiding citizens on the street, one can therefore expect a reduction in criminal activity. While often a challenging venture in the past, Longview will now be able to provide entrepreneurs the realistic opportunity to start their own business, businesses that have the potential to become significant contributors to our economy. The ordinance before you tonight is an accomplishment. It provides for a level playing field and assures that no safety is compromised. It is the result of input, participation, and cooperation of more than just a few city departments. It has been a pleasure to work with these people, and I'd like to personally thank them all, especially Laura Hill, Leesha Kitbrooks, Mitzi Bowie, Angela Choi, Ingrid Self, Scott Karen, Buck Farrar, Johnny Zachary, Mike Shirley, Councilman Sidney Allen, and my fellow task force members. Last, but certainly not least, my respect and gratitude go out to Councilman Ed Moore, who was not only our liaison, but whose experience and wisdom caused this significant task to be completed within the set timeframe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, Ms. Hill. Oh, Mr. Moore, you want to have the floor first? Please, take your time.
Texas is the fastest-growing market in the nation for mobile food units, and this item that we're going to decide upon this evening is an excellent opportunity to allow, as Hank said, entrepreneurs to start their own small business at a relatively inexpensive cost. It's going to give us some additional culinary choices. I think it will be a fun thing for this community to have, and quite frankly, it will generate some sales tax revenue, ad valorem tax revenue, and some permit fees. I understand that at The Green, we are contemplating Food Truck Fridays, which will be an excellent opportunity. I, too, want to thank the 10-member task force for the hard work that you all have done. You only rebelled on me one time, and that was when I called a meeting between Christmas and New Year's, and you emphatically said, "No." But you studied numerous resources, which eventually, you'll see that list on the screen here. But I'd like to recognize, I think I've seen those that are here, if you would, when I call your name, stand and remain standing. David Choi, Kathy Case, Kevin Hawkins, Hank Gutchilar, Mike Kittner, and Doug Shook. Thank you all very much for your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hill, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. I'll do it. Okay, just a brief recap of the organizational process. The council did create the task force back in October. We had five full committee meetings that were all posted and open to the public, and then the subcommittees had numerous meetings. We had three different subcommittees. In addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board met to discuss all of the impact of these suggested amendments. And then, as Hank said, we had numerous departments involved in bringing this forward to you. Okay. The information resources studied, we certainly referred to the Texas Department of State Health Services. The Texas Food Establishment Rules guide everything we do. The Fire Department brought in Chapter 58 from the NFPA, plus general fire safety requirements. National League of Cities provided information, the American Planning Association, numerous Texas cities. The task force, David Choi went out and did a lot of research himself, as did others, and then certainly, our existing ordinances. The goals, just to remind everybody, we, above all, want to provide for public health and safety. We do want to hold the mobile food units to the same standards as our bricks-and-mortar restaurants. There will be no reduced requirements, no preferential treatment. We do have to comply with all applicable state regulations, and then we did review all of our ordinances to determine the necessary amendments to allow this business venture to come forth. Okay. Chapter 46, and this is perhaps the most extensive, Food and Food Establishments, and this goes over everything we are requesting be amended in the existing ordinance. It does add Article 2, a mobile food unit section, provides for registering, regulating, and establishing rules for and monitoring of mobile food units, provides for three categories. Unrestricted will mean they will be able to prepare food on the truck. They can cook. Restricted would be prepackaged, for example, sandwiches, packaged chips, et cetera, and then limited service, such as ice cream or frozen foods, that type of thing. It does require all units to work with a central preparation facility or commissary within the city limits of Longview. They must report a minimum of once daily for supplies, cleaning, and servicing. Provides regulations for these facilities, commissaries. Okay. It requires daily vending itineraries, agreements for property and restroom access to be on file with the Environmental Health Department. We do have to know where they are at any given time, so we can inspect them. It provides for the structural requirements for the unrestricted units. It provides for the Fire Department requirements governing LPG, electrical, fire extinguishers, and fire suppression systems, and provides for the requirement that they must procure all perishable foods locally to ensure health and safety. We have a chain of control. Okay, any questions about Chapter 46?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. They're required to report to a commissary every day within the city limits of Longview.
Yes, sir.
Who's in charge of that commissary? Where's it going to be?
They have various options. They may operate their own commissary for themselves, and it's inspected just like a restaurant. They may decide to enter into a contractual agreement with the local restaurant, or there may be a local owner who establishes a commissary. But those commissaries have to go through the entire development process through Development Services, and then, just like a restaurant, they're inspected by the Health Department annually and the Fire Department annually.
Okay, excellent. So, we have to know where they are?
Right.
How do you know where they are if they can drive around?
That's why the itinerary, they have to tell us, you know, for example, I'll be at MOD Cobb on these dates and times. If that changes, they have 48 hours to let us know unless it's an emergency, such as bad weather, or they have a vehicle breakdown. But they have to notify us, so at any given time, we know where they are if we get a complaint, and if they don't, then they can receive a ticket.
Okay. I'm just asking questions because I just don't know the answers to these things. Okay. So, say XYZ food truck says, "I'm going to be at MOD Cobb," or "I'm going to be on the corner of First and Third Street." There's not even a corner. There's not even a corner there, but just say I'm going to be there. And you go there to inspect them, because that's the only place, the only way you're going to know how to inspect them is where they say they're going to be.
Correct.
And they're not there. What happens?
The inspector, we will have contact information. We will contact them to see where they are, what's going on. Did they have a breakdown? Did they decide not to operate that day? Maybe they're closed because their staff quit. We will track that down, and if they have set up at a different location for some reason, without permission, without notifying us, they would be receiving a ticket.
Okay. How many times can this happen? And how big is the ticket? And what's going to be the deterrent from keeping people from being dishonest to our city? Because those things really worry me. I'm not, I'm not against this. I'm asking questions that I need answers to in order to be able to make an educated decision on this endeavor.
I'm going to have to bring Leisha up because she's familiar with the ticket process with our restaurants.
Can you understand the question I'm asking? How many times do they get to say, I'm sorry, before we have to take, what's our definitive action, in other words?
We normally have the first time, and they get a notice of violation. And the second time, they are given a written notice signed by both. And the third, they will receive a ticket and/or suspension of permit.
So they can do this three times before they get any kind of a ticket?
We really haven't discussed that part of it yet, but that's what we do for a brick-and-mortar.
Okay. But brick-and-mortar can't move around. How can you not find brick-and-mortar?
No, they cannot. They don't move around.
So my question to that is, that doesn't make sense, because you can't not go to a brick-and-mortar and not find them.
That's true.
They're there. So they don't, why give them three chances? They're there, or they're not there.
They want it to be treated differently. I mean, treated the same. I'm sorry, I apologize. That's what we do for the brick-and-mortar. If you would like for us to change that, we can certainly do that.
No, I'm just asking the question so I can understand, because I can see how the, I don't understand why a brick-and-mortar would get three chances. Either you're there, or you're not there.
For a violation. And that was, that is what we would consider a violation.
Okay, I understand that. My question is, how do you find them if they're not where they're supposed to be?
We would have their contact number.
Okay.
And we would get in touch with them.
Just raising some questions. I'm not shooting the messenger, okay?
We did raise those questions. We also raised the questions, I believe, Councilman Moore regarding GPS systems. But we didn't want to incur the cost.
Why would we incur the cost?
We can place it on the owners.
I mean, why would, why on any stretch of imagination would the city incur the cost to allow someone to have a GPS to make money in our city and drive around our town? I'm, okay, I'm just asking.
That was just something we brought up.
I'm just asking.
That was just one of the items that we brought up.
We talked about whether the city incurred the cost. I don't recall that part, but whether we would force the food truck owners to incur the cost. I also might-
We would have to implement the software to keep up with them.
Yeah, right. And I might also add that in the ordinance, the food trucks do get a 30-minute plus-or-minus leeway on where they're supposed to be at a given time.
And we did keep in mind that there may be inclement weather. Like Laura said, someone could have quit. That's why we would contact the owner immediately.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate y'all answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Leisha, excuse me. Do you have any idea of the ballpark figure for the cost of the ticket, I mean, the violation?
No, ma'am. They go straight to municipal court. And most of our tickets start at $250, $250.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay. Chapter 67 is outdoor vendors, solicitors, and mobile food units. This provides regulations for the operations in Section 67-09. They must be located on an approved surface per existing zoning ordinances. This is no change. They cannot vend on grass or dirt. They can't obstruct traffic, fire lanes, drive aisles, or impair visibility. They will be allowed in designated zoning districts per the zoning ordinance, Article 8, which you're going to consider in just a moment. It does provide for exceptions for governmental, school, and church properties, catering, and private parties. Requires units to have property owner's permission to be on private property. It designates sizing criteria for locating in parking lots to provide for access to units as well as permanent establishments. Provides protection for adjacent properties from light infiltration. Provides signage guidance. Provides for trash management requirements. Prohibits customer seating unless it's at a permitted outdoor event. It prohibits setting up in public right-of-ways except in the downtown business district. It provides guidelines for operations in downtown business district. It establishes permitting requirements and procedures, and does require a certificate of occupancy. Any questions about Chapter 67?
If you're in a gravel parking lot, how does, you say you can't be on dirt. Is that comparable, or?
We have very few gravel parking lots. They're usually in industrial, but they would be allowed within those gravel parking lots if it is actually a true parking lot.
There was some significant discussion about our requiring a site plan from the operator, and due to that, we decided that we would provide a guide to all the operators, so they understand where they may and may not set up. And this is a rough draft. It has not been completely finalized. It shows the fire lanes where they can't park, around hydrants, et cetera. So this satisfied the need to guarantee that people are not causing visibility obstructions or hampering fire response, et cetera. Okay. Chapter 79, we did look at this. Very few updates to this. It's basically to guarantee appropriate routing with the police department, so everybody knows what's going on. So it's more of an housekeeping update. Any questions? That's our proposal.
Mayor, before we initiate discussion, I was remiss. There are a number of task force members that aren't here this evening that I failed to mention. Eric Dean, Gerald Rodriguez, and Chuck King were also very helpful in the process.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, discussion?
I have one question. I understand that Tyler has the same, they have the food trucks. I understand that after a year, there's one food truck over there. I don't know if that's accurate. Do you know, is that correct?
That's what I've heard, too. I do not know.
So, and it seems like their regulations may be holding that back some. Are we different than Tyler? Or do we model after Tyler, or?
We're much better.
Okay.
Whatever that means, I like it.
The city of Tyler has to work with the Northeast Texas Health District, so there's two jurisdictions governing those operations. And in our case, we're all one unit. So that's why we're being able to expedite things.
So we are different than Tyler? I mean, our regulations aren't exactly the same?
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to, it's going to be easier to have a food truck here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Great.
But I mean, this is just a comment, and probably ultimately a question for Laura, but along those same lines, I am glad to hear that we're holding the food trucks to the same standards that we require for brick-and-mortars. I think that's really important, because obviously, we appreciate all of our restaurant owners that provide so much to our community. So we want to be sure that we treat them fairly as we welcome this new business endeavor. And also, and I've asked this question before, so I know the answer, but it is most concerning to me that we do require that high standard, because I have a picture of what a food truck looks like in my mind, and I would love for that to be here in Longview, and I hope that it will be very soon. But I do not want to welcome the alternative that is not welcome in our city, and I don't want to open the door for that. So as I understand what you're telling me, with these ordinance, we are not welcoming substandard, any sort of food trucks.
State law is very specific, and then on top of that, our own standards. So we absolutely realize we cannot give the mobile food units preferential treatment for substandard requirements.
Okay.
Please.
Okay. Ms. Hill. It was expressed or concerned during the discussion about the sales tax. We certainly don't want these people operating in the city of Longview and running off with our sales tax money. Will, and I'm going to use Hank for an example, if Hank goes in the business, will he have to get a sales tax number that he will have with him in his food truck?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that number will be displayed. And this may be a question for Angela. If we obtain that number, and we come back, and we check the records to see if he's actually paying sales tax on items sold in our town?
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes. Okay. So we will be able to verify that he's operating in the city of Longview and that he's paying sales tax to the city of Longview.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have one other question. Are all mobile food trucks units, are they drivable, or are these pull-along trailers of that type?
The way we wrote it, it's either or.
But it'd be the same standard between the two?
The same standard, yes. But you can have a towable trailer or one unit, a truck.
I still have a lot of questions.
Okay.
Sorry. Not even a question, this is more of a comment. First of all, I want to say what a fantastic job everyone involved in this has done, because I know this has been a long, difficult process, and you all have put a lot of thought into this. And, you know, I've heard things said that this task force was dominated by brick-and-mortar people, and I don't see that. I see five out of the 10 that I think are brick-and-mortar, so I don't think it was dominated by any one particular group. But the point of that is objectivity. You can have your own business, but be objective in a task force, and that's what people are asked to do, is be objective and bring out your knowledge. If I remember correctly, the task force set up for the comprehensive plan was probably 95% business people. Isn't that what you want when you're trying to get input on an item? It's people that know what they're talking about? So I think this is, this task force is a fantastic makeup of people in our community willing to step out and give an objective view of something that may or may not impact them negatively or positively. And I think, I applaud you all for what you've done. You have done a fantastic job of bringing something to us. That doesn't answer all my questions yet, but I appreciate all the work that's gone into that. Because I'm, I sit here, and I know we all do, I have to look at this as, I'm a numbers guy, and I'm saying numbers for our budget. I have to make sure that this is going to not negatively impact our city budget in any way, because that's what my concern is. And the two questions I have, and I think Mr. Allen just allayed one of them, we have to be able to collect our sales tax revenues, because sales tax revenues from restaurant sales are a huge portion of our budget. It's what's keeping us afloat right now with our oil and gas revenues coming down. If we don't have our restaurant sales tax numbers, we will be in trouble. We can't afford to lose $1 of that sales tax revenue to an outside entity that's not giving us our share. We cannot. And I need y'all's assurance that that is not going to happen, because that's ultimately important for us to be able to have a budget up here. That'd be like us losing our property tax values to someone that we don't have a say-so over. So it's very important to me from a budget standpoint.
Yes, sir.
The next thing that concerns me even more is, we can't afford to hire someone to do this. We don't have the expense side to hire additional person to go out and monitor this. So I'm assuming you all have taken that into account, and that we won't require any additional staffing to be able to monitor this industry, because if we're going to require staffing, that's going to cost us money that we don't have. And I need to make sure we've taken that into account, because those are the numbers. Those are all I'm concerned about, numbers, Xs and Os for our city budget. That's what concerns me. We're not here as a council to regulate competition. That's not our job. Our job is to make sure we provide public health and safety, and we meet our budget. And so those are things that I need reassurance of in this endeavor before I can move forward. And I'm sure y'all have all talked about this. I just haven't heard that yet. So just let me hear it.
We will not require any additional staffing. This is the same as opening any other restaurant, which we do day in and day out. Ryan's closed, another one will open, and we don't ask for additional sanitarians to perform the inspections. So-
So we've got this.
We've got it.
That, I just have to hear you say that, because that's a huge concern of mine, knowing what we face in a city budget.
Yes, sir.
And Mayor, also let me add that I called the appraisal district to make sure that these mobile food units will be taxed as commercial enterprises, along with all the equipment that's in the mobile food unit. And I was assured that they will be assessed.
And as they should be. They should undergo the same scrutiny that our standalone restaurants have to undergo, and the same expenses and the same taxes. There should be no difference in that.
Right.
So thank you, Mr. Moore, for that, for doing your homework on that. Okay, I have one more concern, and we're not having this tonight's meeting, but I understand we're doing another part of this at our next meeting.
Right.
Is that going to affect what we decide here? Because I like to know the whole picture before I can vote on something. I like to know everything, and we're putting something off till next meeting, and I understand, I'm not saying we're baiting and switching, I'm just saying, is next meeting going to have an impact on what we decide tonight? Because if it is-
No.
I need to know that.
Well-
I think we all need to know that.
Okay. Tonight, if you vote yes, you are allowing mobile food units to begin operating within the city of Longview on private property. Okay? On the February 25th, we're bringing two other issues to you at that time. One of them is the fee resolution, amending that to allow us to collect the fees. That's all it will do. The other part is to decide whether or not the city of Longview will allow mobile food units to operate within the park system. If you decide yes, that's fine. If you decide no, that's fine. The food trucks could still operate within the city limits. For example, at Moncog, or the mall, or wherever.
So neither of those are make or break?
No.
What we decide tonight is not going to be dictated by the following meeting?
Correct.
I just need to know those things. I appreciate that very much. Anything else?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're to zoning.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Choi. Public hearing on M1601.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The Mobile Food Vending Task Force, along with staff, is proposing to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for two uses, definitions, and create parking requirements for the mobile food units and mobile food unit parks. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not have these uses listed within the zoning ordinance, nor are they defined. Staff and the task force are proposing two new uses. As you can see here on the chart, one is mobile food unit, the other is mobile food unit park. Mobile food units will be allowed in all non-residential zoning districts seen here. Mobile food unit parks will be allowed in general retail, light and heavy commercial, central business district, light and heavy industrial, and planned development districts. Here, we define both uses. And then here, we do have parking requirements for a mobile food unit park. Just requesting that they have two spaces for each pad site, which is consistent with other cities that we have researched. The Mobile Food Vending Task Force, along with Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. We have Hank, do you wish to speak to this one? You're good on this?
No.
Okay, never mind. Public hearing is now open. Any discussion? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, public hearing, consider S1601. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. You've seen this zoning case before. This is located on South High Street. A specific use permit is required for a drive-through service within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. High Street is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for this type of use. Planning and Zoning Commission, the staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Choi, PD1601.
Thank you. Okay, the applicant is requesting to rezone PD13-11 to PD1601 to reduce the minimum house sizes from 2,400 square feet to 2,100 square feet for 30 lots in Savannah Hills subdivision. The applicant previously submitted a planned development that was approved by City Council in November of 2013- in November of 2013. The applicant is requesting only to amend the minimum house size. Everything else will remain the same. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Public hearing's now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Okay, items of community interest. Mr. Moore.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ms. Nottingham.
Just a reminder, my town hall meeting will be March 3rd, 6:00 p.m., Stafford Park Resource Center. Thank you.
Ms. Williams is not here. We need to excuse her.
Can I make a motion to excuse Cash?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excused. Ms. Shara.
I forgot to put up the slide, but my town hall meeting is, thank you. So on top of things around here. My town hall meeting is actually Tuesday, February 23rd at 5:30. So you should maybe ignore that slide. It's Tuesday, February 23rd. It's at Winterfield United Methodist Church. It's on Tryon Road, and it'll actually begin at 5:30. So I would love it if you could join me there. If you're not from my district, you're also welcome, but I hope to have a good turnout and would love to see everyone at that. That's it.
Mr. Wright.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Allen.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, items of community interest here. It's time for the mayor pro tem to read these. Mayor's tired of reading.
My first big job. That's exciting.
Yeah, go for it.
Tutoring Tuesday. Each Tuesday from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., children between the ages of 5 and 13 who are struggling with their homework or understanding what they are doing in class can register for free for one-on-one tutoring with our qualified librarians. The child needs to bring their homework along with any detailed instruction from their teachers. We are also needing additional volunteers to help with Tutoring Tuesdays. So if you are interested, I'm sure that you can contact our library and they will put you in touch with the right people.
This will be at the library. Suppose that will be at the library. That means that?
Yes, it will be at the library.
Okay, just make sure that they understand it's at the library.
Thank you. Wasn't in the paragraph. Please join the East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team and the Zonta Club of Longview for our third annual Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. It will be Saturday, February 27th, starting at the First Baptist Church, 209 East South Street. Registration begins at 8:00 and the walk begins at 9:00. If you have a pair of red high heels to wear, that would be fantastic. If you don't, please still come walk with us or bring them for a friend, but we will accept you wearing jeans and sneakers. We'd love to have a great turnout. It was an awesome time last year, and we greatly appreciate your support. A new addition has been made to the City Send app. Complaints about mosquitoes can now be made via City Send, which will then issue a work request allowing our vector control to investigate that area and initiate the appropriate response. So if you have a concern about mosquito, I know that's been an ongoing issue for many in our community with concerns. You can now use your City Send, which if you're not familiar, it's the app on your smartphone. You can take a picture right where you are and submit it through the app, and it records your location, which is really high-tech of us. So please make sure you report things using City Send for all of your issues. That's it.
You did a fantastic job at that. Okay, one note of interest. It appears that we have a new news journal reporter. It appears it's Mr. Jimmy Oz. Welcome, Mr. Oz, to the council chambers. Look forward to seeing you. Okay, survey time. And before I even read the survey, I just, I have to comment. When I ask these surveys, these are simply questions. These are information gathering. I unfortunately do not have a dictatorship or an edict where I can make these things happen overnight. I wish I could, but I can't. So, you know, these are just survey questions where we can gain information, we can discuss things, we can come up with ideas, and it's kind of fun. But I'm just gonna leave it at that. I'll stop there. Okay, here's our survey question tonight. With the exciting new opening of the Forest Street Extension, which if y'all hadn't gone out and seen it, you must go see it. Phenomenal job, great new artery for our community. What type of business would you most like to see operate there? Your choices are retail, restaurant, family entertainment, nightlife, or other. Overwhelmingly, family entertainment by 47%. You know, that's fantastic. Okay. You developers, you investors, you retailers, you real estate people, y'all better be listening because that's what the citizens are looking for. That's what will succeed in these areas. I mean, come on, that is, that's amazing, and it's good. The others were close, but nowhere near 47%. So family entertainment, that'd be great for quality of life here in Longview, wouldn't it? Okay, here's our fun question. What type of Valentine's gift do you most like to receive? Chocolate, flowers, jewelry, a card, none, because Valentine's is a commercialized holiday, or other? Okay, you none, Valentine's is a commercialized holiday, y'all gotta go somewhere. I mean, come on, it's Valentine's Day. But this was the closest survey I've ever had. Three of them were all 20%, and then 119 and 118. Is that unbelievable? The 20 percenters were jewelry, of course. Wonder who's writing those. How many times did you vote, Kelly? Flowers and chocolate, all came in really high. So it's a good survey. Think about that Valentine's Day coming up. Book club. How many of y'all have started reading the book? How many of y'all like the book? What'd you get out of it so far? Let me just tell you what I got of this week's. Feed the positive dog, okay? You got two dogs. You got a positive dog and a negative dog in ya. Feed the positive dog. And that is such a, such a visual thing for me to think about that and how we can make a difference in just how we internally feed our emotions, our attitudes. And so to me, that was a really good one. Anybody else come with anything good so far?
I got one I want to share.
Please.
This was my, it was right at the very beginning of the book, and for those that haven't read it, Joy is the driver of the energy bus. She's like my new favorite person. She's fantastic. But George is our grumbling person, and he's in a bad mood, and he gets on the bus and he says, "I bet she has no worries," he thought. "All she has to do is drive a bus each day." And that's how he explains to himself why she is in such a fantastic mood and why he's allowed to be grumbly and go through life with a bad attitude. And I thought, what a wonderful reminder that, I mean, of course, you should never judge what another person is going through, because we learn later what Joy is dealing with, but what a powerful reminder that we need to stop and take the time and have that positive attitude. And so many times, I think, oh, gosh, I don't have time for that. I'm doing so many things. I don't have time to stop and pick up that letter. I don't have time to come to a city council meeting and hear what's going on in our town. And it is up to you to have that positive attitude and not think it's easier for someone else because they don't have as much going on as me, or however you want to explain it. It's up to you to have that attitude, embrace it, and be part of the community, and take the time to do things that make a difference.
In one of the, in one of the comments I had Monday night on the book club, which